Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, June 13th, 2017. Please rise for a moment of silence. Let the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Chortel?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Testa? Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Servoni?
Here. Councilor Laterno did advise me that he would be running behind this evening. Next is item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through D, F through L, and N through T.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I just, L through T was the last one?
N through T.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Did everybody vote? Okay. Thank you. All right. Items removed from the consent agenda, the first item is item 3E. If we could have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $8,000 from the Comptroller's regular wages account to the Comptroller's operational expenses account.
So moved.
That was a second by Counselor Sullivan?
Second, I'm sorry.
Moved and seconded, Counselor Fishbein, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess to Mr. Bose, Jim, we got a letter saying that this was necessary due to a postage machine increase in required certified mailings and increase in postage machine and the main town hall copy or rental price. So I'm trying to figure out, because it's a 10% deviation from what was budgeted, what attributes?
Yeah, this, and I probably should have been a little more detailed in the letter because I know we talk about this from time to time during the budget sessions. This line item deals with all the costs and what we call the central mailroom, the copy room, and all the costs associated with it. And it absorbs the costs of basically all the departments that use those services rather than have someone sit there and, you know, make a count of mail that goes out, et cetera, et cetera, or copies made, and then allocate them the budgets later. I mean, the town did that 15, 16 years ago, and it was a position that actually spent a lot of its time doing that. The importance of doing that frankly, and spending $60,000 on a person to do it didn't seem to be like it, you know, warranted that cost. So that position was actually eliminated, not just for that reason, but for others several years back. But anyway, there are three basic machines that we rent there to try to reduce costs when it comes to having a very large copy machine, a stuffing machine, and of course the postage machine. So therefore, even departments that are not in this building actually utilize that mailroom to do those services. So the three pieces of machinery, the budgets on those items, the costs on those items came in at an actual cost after our budget was adopted. And frankly, we just started really realizing that during our budget session this year. But anyway, so those costs on those three pieces of machinery are a couple thousand dollars higher than what we had anticipated and make up about 2,200 to 2,500 of those, the increase of the request of the 8,000. The remainder of the request is actually for postage usage for the most, excuse me, for the most part, especially we noticed a very large increase in certified mailings this fiscal year versus last, which is the most expensive mailings that we can have. We absorb all those costs in that line item regardless of the department that sends that out. And plus, it was just a small increase in postage usage anyway by the departments. So that's basically what the request, the transfer request is for.
Okay. So when we were going through the budget this year, you gave us a report that showed how much you had expended, how much everybody had expended through the end of March. And at that time, this line had expended $73,000. And the amount that was appropriated was $109,000 for the year.
We've had a replenishment of the postage. We don't, we replenish the postage machine maybe four or five times a year. So that's why we're probably on the cusp of replenishing it in the end of March.
Okay, but at the end of March, so you?
At the end of March, April, May, and June is probably the three months of costs for mailing that are not in that figure.
So the report that we got was ending 3/31/2017.
Correct.
The amount was $73,470.
Correct.
Was that an accurate number?
Well, it was accurate up to a point where, but the machine has now got to be replenished because it's running very, very low.
Okay.
It's prepaid postage.
So the question is, on 3/31/2017, you gave us this report after that, representing to us that that was the actual expenditure?
Correct.
Was that the correct number?
At that time, yes, it was probably before we did the next installment of the replenishment of the postage machine.
Okay. And in April, that replenishment would have happened?
Yes.
And how much?
April, I believe that was around 30 grand, 25 to 30 grand, yeah.
Okay. So that still would have put you south of $100,000. You still have $9,000.
And we're projecting?
In the current budget that was already budgeted?
Correct.
And you're looking for an additional eight?
That's correct.
So you've, it just, this doesn't, this doesn't add up.
Well, because?
Because you've already attributed for the postage. So you can't then say, "We're looking for more postage money."
Well, there's more postage money, but there's also the final invoices on the rental of the last quarterly invoices for the rental of those pieces of machinery, which were higher.
Are those new contracts or old contracts?
Those are new contracts.
Okay. Which went into effect generally when?
They went into effect, I believe, July 1 of '16, but the pricing, the estimates that we got were prior to that based upon older prices before these machines' terms were up and we had to re-lease, if you will, or re-rent. And the prices were, that we were given by some of the, by the vendors were quite a bit lower than what the actual prices came in.
Okay. So when we did the computations for this year's budget, did we use the?
We used?
The new contract numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we had them at that time, yes.
Okay. So based upon, you're asking for a total budget this year of almost $120,000?
About $117,000, I believe, yeah. That's close, yeah.
And when we just passed this budget, you asked for $111,000?
That's correct.
So that's less than $117,000. So how?
Well, usage, we based the budget based upon usage at that time. Our usage, we've been noticing, has been on the increase. That doesn't mean it's going to be the same next fiscal year because, you know, I have no control over, we have no control over the amount of mail that comes in to be, to be sent out.
Okay. And is there a?
That's a variable, and it's, you know, something that's not hard, not easy to predict.
Oh, understood. And perhaps if we used email a little bit more, we wouldn't have those expenses. But is there a automatic payment quarterly of a certain amount to the meter?
No, we, because if we didn't need it all, if we had an automatic payment, an automatic amount, we don't want to put too much in that meter and have a ton of there unutilized at the end of the fiscal year. And by the same way, we don't, if we look at it, we say, okay, how many more weeks are left? How many more mailings are going out? And then, and it's relatively high usage lately. And we go from there and we replenish the postage meter with what we think at that time.
Okay. Now, you had said in your correspondence that it was certified mailings were?
Yeah, it's all mailing, but certified, we noticed a, probably a little bit more of an unusual increase this year. And certified mails, when you get the return, the little green return receipt, I believe is $6.35 or something like that, we're up like, something like 700 from last year, you know, so that's substantial.
Okay. And what kinds of things will we be sending out certified mail that we're not getting reimbursed for?
Well, that's going to be Jermaine each department. I really couldn't tell you. I know a lot from probate goes out certified, sometimes legal stuff, a lot from the police department. This also handles most of the police department mailing, things of that nature.
So when probate?
Yeah, I don't want to blame just those folks as a, you know, but when probate brings something in to be mailed via certified or any other department, that line item takes the, that line item pays the expense.
I can't, I just, off the top of my head, I can't think of anything that probate sends out certified that they don't put the burden on the petitioner or something like that to give notice. So I'm just trying, I know planning and zoning uses it for notice.
I was going to say that to announce various potential changes, variances and things of that nature, that's correct.
Variance is usually the applicant, to my knowledge, asks to send out a certified mail and then show proof that that was done. So that wouldn't be an expenditure by the town. I'm just trying to figure out.
Yes, well, the actually, the forwarding or the indication to that person that there might be some type of change when that goes out certified, that line item bears that.
Because it's certified by the applicant. So that wouldn't be a cost incurred by the town.
I do know that there's, I have seen, only because I happened to go down there once to see how operations are running down there, and I do see quite a bit of certified that go out from planning on occasion as well.
Okay. And the copier and the machine, is that something that goes out to bid?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we actually bid the three pieces of machinery.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Anything around the public? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. On to item 3M, if we could have a motion.
I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $250,000 from contingency accrued expense account to pension employer contributions accounts.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Counselor Chortel, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bose, Mr. Mayor, I just had some questions on this item. Just wanted some clarification.
Sure.
As a start, I just think that's a lot of money to put on the consent agenda. That's why I pulled it off. I'm not saying I'm against it, I just want to understand more about it.
Well, if I may, just a little bit of an intro.
Sure.
You may remember last month, we had discussions about the pension plan and some of the unspent funds. And I made a commitment to the nine of you folks at the time that, you know, when June came along, I'd take a look at it and come back to you folks for approval and to see if you guys wanted to sweep more into the plan than was required. Because this is not required. We're going to make our 100% ARC either way. But again, I made a commitment to you folks that I would do that in June, and so that's why I've, I've come, I've come forward to, not to, you know, put you guys in a corner to say, you know, but if you'd like me to do something like this, I would very, feel very comfortable doing it only with the council's approval. And we had a little consensus that, excuse me, that night, and I believe that there was a strong consensus to come forward and at least in the month of June, after the budget was settled. So here we are.
Okay. So let's start with contingency. We're taking $250,000 out of contingency. Where does that leave contingency for the next 17 days? How's it going to finish up?
The contingency is going to still have about $100,000 in it.
And then we're?
Maybe a little bit less. I didn't add it, but it was on tonight's agenda, so.
Okay. And then in the pension fund, where, forget the 250 for a moment, where is the pension fund going to be in 17 days? Is it going to have an overage and underage? What's?
Well, that pension fund, after we make the next payments, the employer managing payments for the general government and for the school non-certified folks, we're going to still have about $200,000 in that line item.
So what happens to that $200,000?
That lapses unless we sweep it into the pension plan, as we discussed during the?
But we're sweeping 250 from contingency and, okay?
If we're going to sweep, because mechanically, if we're going to sweep any funds into the pension fund assets, I'd like it to show up in that fringe benefit line item, not out of contingency. Therefore, just, it's all in one line item for all of us to see. It's just easier to see it in one place, I think.
Okay. But that 200 that's already going to be in there is going to go into the general fund?
That's correct.
And then we're going to take 250, okay?
That's correct. So in essence, if we moved 250 into that line item, there's actually going to probably about 450,000.
Okay. So just let me ask this, because I want to make sure I understand. When I hear like the pension fund is X percent fund, it's 73% funded, or whatever the number is, that's basically a calculation talking about our ability to pay those obligations, but it's a hypothetical. It's assuming everyone retires, right? I mean, it's assuming, what's this? Tell me what it's assuming.
It's, yeah, it's a little bit different than that. What it is, it's, you've got to take the equation on two sides. Let's just talk the expense side, or the obligation side. All of the future payments that are going to be done or made to retirees is one side of the equation. Normal retirement age of 62, a certain percent of people won't make it to 62, they'll leave beforehand, they'll take the lump sum, they'll pass away, et cetera, et cetera. That's all done actuarially, so I can't even tell you how those folks do those numbers. Those folks are geniuses, but I don't know how their minds work. Anyway, the second part of that is how do we, how do we pay for these obligations? Obviously, we pay for them with the assets of the plan going forward, brought back at a present value at a certain point in time. That point in time is June 30th every year because that's our balance sheet, that's our audit balance sheet date. So it really isn't, if everybody left on the same day, what would they be, what would that differential be between what we owed? It's actually what's going to be owed to everybody. Okay, I'm 53, well, 53 and a half, okay? Normal retirement age for me is 62. There's an early retirement option, which I probably can't afford to take advantage of. But anyway, actuarially speaking, if I were the only employee, okay, and my life expectancy is 79 and a half or 80, whatever it is, that calculation, that obligation, that cost side of it, actually computes me living to my life expectancy, despite what my family's trying to do with me. And then, of course, how much in assets has got to be available to make those payments to me until I'm 79 and a half or 80 years old or whatever I am? That's what, that's what the amount is.
So it's, right, so that's helpful. So it's assuming, but it's still assuming, the number assumes payments to people who are nowhere near retirement?
Yes, that's correct. And at the balance sheet date, you compare what those two computations are.
Right.
And if your assets exceed, you're, I hate to use the words overfunded, but you have more than 100% of your funding requirement. If it's under that, it's called underfunded.
Okay. And then, as you pointed out, the other part of the equation is there's assets in there that earn money, you know, on the stock market. What is the, is that like 1.8 million or something? What's the balance of the assets that are in there roughly?
I called our financial advisor Friday. He just called me today and he says, I don't have a write-down on it because we will, June 30th, we have approximately 192.6 million.
192.6, okay.
Of assets in the plan.
Okay. So then?
That was as of, I'm sorry, that was as of May 31st.
Okay. That's, that's, that's fine. In my last, well, it's not my last question, it's my, it's almost my last question. So to make this transfer, I'm assuming, I know what you're going to say, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to ask though, like, how are we doing? You know, we have 17 days left in the year, are we going to run a surplus? I know you're going to say that the audit is the only true.
Yeah.
But I mean, you must feel comfortable enough to make this transfer. I mean, I'm assuming we're not running a deficit.
I?
Or we wouldn't do this.
Yeah, I, I think it's unlikely that the $250,000 would have a, or anything more that you folks authorized me to sweep into the pension plan up to maybe another 50,000 or 100,000 more. I don't think that's going to have a material effect on our reserves.
Right. We would add to them. I mean, it would be money we would?
If we did not do it and they were not spent, that's correct.
Right, right. To your point about it wouldn't have a material effect on the reserves, what material effect does it have on 192.6 million? I'm just trying to understand.
No, it's, I mean, it's not a ton of money when you're comparing it to 192 million dollars, it's not.
Like, it's not going to bump that percentage, whatever that percentage is?
Well, let's put it this way, 1% would be 1.9 million.
Okay. I mean, I guess that's what I'm struggling with is?
One quarter of 1%, give or take, even less if it's less than 350, 400,000.
Right. I guess I'm struggling with, if we kind of agree that we could, this money is money we can afford to put toward this account, I just, I wonder if there isn't a better benefit to doing something else with the same money, I guess is what I'm saying, versus putting it in the pension fund?
Again, I'm only, I'm only here because I promised you nine folks that we were gonna, I was going to do this and?
No, I know you did. You talked about that. I know that came up during, I remember that. I'm not saying that, that did come up during our budget hearing.
I, you know, in the context of 192 million dollars, Councilman, it's not a big amount. It's not going to really make a dent into anything. And I was, the thing that?
There's a big caveat on this, and that is that certainly our funding of the pension is an important factor for those who analyze the town's fiscal health. We now are at 22% of salary to fund pension. From that perspective, any dollar in addition that we put into it, if we steadily do that, we will hopefully reduce that percentage of salary. Because ultimately, budgeting for high percentages of salary in order to meet the arc is a straitjacket that financially becomes a problem. Just about every municipality that's gone bankrupt, it's because of post-retirement benefits. So, you know, we, at one point, when we were fully funded, we went through a period of time where they said, oh, you don't have to make a payment. If we went through that again, I'd probably say, we're going to make some payment, but it may not be a large amount, but just to hedge off the stock market crash that puts you in a hole, and then you start again. So I think there is an advantage. If we have money that we can put in that and try to ultimately, over several years, bring down that percentage of salary that we're having to fund the pension with, that's the advantage.
Can I, another question on, this came up during the hearings too, the FTE situation. We budget for 100% FTEs, 100% staffing, even though we have some FTEs that aren't filled. So do those calculations you just mentioned take that? Are they assuming?
Yes.
100%? So how many FTEs do we have that are not filled, right, as of now?
Yeah, I spoke to our personnel director the other day, and I believe, well, I can't answer to the Board of Ed non-certifieds.
Yes, okay.
Just on our side, there's maybe five right now that are in some type of process, either testing, or the testing's completed and the list has been developed and/or someone's interviewing very close. I believe that he said four or five.
Okay. Okay. It's, yeah, I'm still, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Mayor. It helps me, I still am a little torn on this because I still feel like there's a lot of competing, I mean, everyone wants money. I mean, as you know, better than anybody, everyone's trying to get money, and I just worry about, there's a lot of things you could do with that money. You know, you could set it aside for the AAA bond rating, you could help put it toward community pool, you could buy open space with it, there's all sorts of things you could do with it. And I'm just trying to understand if it's?
No, they're all, they're all valid points and all valid concerns. You know, the rating is an overall look at many, many other things. The numbers, yeah, their numbers are important, but there's also, you know, planning managerial aspects, demographics frankly, which are sometimes very much outside of our control, economic development activity, you know, certainly not going to be great news that a large taxpayer is leaving in another year and a half, give or take, which we have disclosed and spoke openly and honestly with our credit rating agencies, you know, not that they are not going to find that out anyway, but, you know, they're right down the street, actually, I think from where Bristol Myers is headquartered. But, you know, so we, as soon as we hear something that's negative with regard to that, we tell them. When we sell bonds and it's time for another rating, we'll bring some of the success stories to them. You know, it's an announcement just the other day with regards to a company that's already here in Connecticut, expanding here in Wallingford, maybe, bringing maybe 100 or so jobs, which is great. You know, so it tends to be a negative type of a process. You know, they're looking at the downgrade, you know, they're not always, you know, they're like that tough professor that everybody tries to avoid in college. It's a passage through the grapevine, stay away from this guy because he doesn't give A's. But, you know, that's sort of what that process is like.
Another, there's another factor here. We are in a whole new situation, at least from my perspective. I've been in office a few years. I have not seen previously what I think is going to be happening. We don't have a state budget yet. And whether, whether the Damocles sword drops this year, it's going to drop one of these years because they have no money. Their operational costs are outstripping the revenue. So when we look at what our issues are, if this goes into pension, it can only help. If we're looking to spend it in some other way, we better make sure that whatever the state is going to do is not going to be too disturbing before we decide we're going to spend it on something that is, is not as large an issue as far as funding as the pension payment. Obviously, health insurance is another huge payment that we make every year, but those are the things that stay with us, and unless we deal with those responsibly, they really have the capacity to drown us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. To address the point that this was a lot of money to put on the consent agenda, I have historically placed on the consent agenda items or moving money that is consistent with some prior vote of the council. For example, when a union contract is approved and we need to budget for the raises, quite often those are substantial sums of money because the contract's been bargained over 18 months past its expiration. So as this was not inconsistent with last year's budget and it was, well, this year's, this current fiscal year's budget, and this was discussed over the workshop period for the next year's budget, I thought that this was just consistent with what had been previously budgeted. Counselor Testa?
Thank you. I had basically just a minor question that has not ballooned. Because as I listened to the discussions and the explanations that were presented to Counselor Chortel, as we went on and on, the laws of logic just kind of went out the window on me. I, there was contradictory statements, at least an intent. Mr. Bose, you commented that, well, it's really not a big amount of money in the grand scheme of things, given the pension fund, and then the next thing we know, the mayor was, was pointing out the dire circumstances and that, hmm, if we don't put this money in there, you know, it's a hedge against the horrible things happening down the road. It did, just sometimes the? Sometimes the, the, when, when anyone questions the financial decisions of the administration, the. You know, the fallback to the, to the sky is falling, it, it just gets old, it's really getting old. We're all aware of, of the circumstances we face, but every single time a question comes up, we get faced with that. And in this particular case, it's not making any sense to me. I'm going off the track here. But for goodness sake, now if in fact, we're so concerned about. The, the, the situation with the state as, and I am, we all are. It seems counterintuitive to me to take this money and put it in the pension fund. We should be putting into the doomsday fund or whatever you want to call it. To offset these horrible things that the state is doing to us. Well, you know, won't be it for me to suggest putting more money into reserves, but if our whole rationale. For what we're doing is to offset the fear of, of the horrible financial future we all face. We should be putting every dime we have into some kind of doomsday, doomsday fund. So the, the logic escapes me. But anyway, let's get back to the matter at hand. It appears to me that frankly, we're getting near the end of the year. We have a lot of money left in the contingency and someone said, you know what, let's just put it in the pension fund. That's a good place for it, I can't think of anything else to do and that always needs extra money. And if that was the rationale, I would have been like, I would have been, nah, makes sense, that's okay, I can accept that. But then you said, we're gonna put this 250 in there, but the 200 that's in there probably isn't gonna go in there. We'll end up putting that into the, we'll put that into reserves. So in effect, we're really just putting 50 more. When the day is done and so why are we even putting the 200? Why aren't we taking this 250 and finding another use as Counselor Shortell said? And if it's the feeling that we haven't really identified anything that strikes our fancy. Say so. Don't pose it as it had to be done because if we didn't. Or if God, won't be it, or if God forbid, any of us suggests something else, we're being irresponsible. Just lay it out, we, we thought that'd be a good place for it. But really, I don't understand anyway, the 250 now and then the 200 that's still there isn't gonna go. Why not 450? Maybe you can explain that to me, please.
That's, that's what I.
That is realized enough, thank you.
Now, that's what I was speaking to when Mr. Shortell asked the question, how much would, would probably be left over? And we could utilize some of that into the pension plan as well, I mean, that was my response.
But then you say that the 200, the 200 will end up not going in.
No, Mr. Shortell said if we do nothing, I, and I don't mean to speak to, for him, but if I remember his question is what, what would happen with that? It gets closed out, just like every other line item gets closed out at the end of the fiscal year, when the books are, when the books are closed.
Will that happen?
What do you mean, will that happen?
What do you mean, if we do nothing, I'm, I'm losing you here, if we, what do you mean if we do nothing?
No, with the 200,000, the money's just, the money closes out at the end of the.
But is it not intended to go there?
Correct.
The pension fund?
Correct.
So won't it?
Because it's, it won't unless you folks authorize me to do so. In other words, I have no.
Won't you ask?
I'm sorry.
Aren't you going to?
That's my year where I only have about.
No, aren't you going to? Isn't the intent for it to be used in the pension fund?
The intent right now is two things, to transfer 250,000 on a contingency to the pension line item. Where we make.
Right.
Players' contribution. And to get a consensus and/or maybe a maximum as to how much you folks would like me to utilize, you've got approximately 400,000. If we put the 250 in there, 400 to 450,000. If we transfer those funds into the, from the contingency account to the pension account. That will free up 400, approximately 450,000 by the end of this fiscal year. So the second part of that is, how much do you as well mean to sweep into the pension plan? Because I'm not doing it without, without the council's vote. Because I have no, I, that's, that's like paying a bill that doesn't exist. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
No. Up to 400. So, you know, that's, I was asked to do this last month. Here we are.
You were asked to do what?
To come, the consensus of the council, I believe on the May 4 meeting was to come back to you folks. To sweep some funds that wouldn't be spent, possibly, into the pension plan. Unless I was, I'll have to burn, get Scott to burn a CD to, to see if I grossly misunderstood the.
Understood.
The nine heads that were going like this that night, they were all nodding in approval. And that was after about five and a half hours, so I.
No, I understand.
We were all a little bit goofy, but I'm pretty sure I remember that. You know, you remember that.
I had mentioned, I know during the budget. Meetings that. I wanted to have a detailed, you know, discussion of the pension plan. At some point in the near future, you know, we will be having that. Obviously, we're heading into the summer now, so we'll see how the meetings go.
I've got, I've got.
But I think we need, we, we certainly could use a seminar.
Yes.
Meeting on nothing but pension fund.
Absolutely.
Let's find out how it works.
I got some feelers out to our actuary and to our financial advisor to free up some dates. If you folks want to provide me with some dates, summertime obviously runs into vacations, but. If you want to give me some weeks that are very bad, I'll try to work around that with those folks and, and have that for you, absolutely.
Well, and I, and I say that just in reference to, in response, I know Counselor Shortell had a lot of really good questions that developed from his original question and. I think we all need a refresher on, on all of the decisions that are made there and how it works. And our strategies and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'm, I'm okay for now, thank you.
Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bowes, just, just so that I'm kind of clear on what's happening here, this, this 250,000 is in the contingency account right now, correct?
Correct.
And the only thing that this item is asking for right now is to move it into the pension line item, but you're not executing anything other than the move.
There's a, the second portion of my, my letter, I think that you have, is to authorize the movement of funds into the pension plan as well.
Okay, so I mean, right now, I mean, so what we're doing at this moment here is we're voting on. The transfer from contingency into the line item for you to take the action that you've outlined, but that action is only 250,000.
That's correct.
But there's about 400,000 available?
There's approximately, there will be approximately a couple hundred thousand left over.
We are not recommending 400,000. We're only recommending what you see, which is the 250,000. Because that is approximately the amount that would be left over in the pension line.
Contingency.
I believe. Mr. Bowes wants to take it out of the contingency rather than the pension line because it's easier to track what happened. That the payment was, was made over and above what I suppose the ARC would be. For the year and that might get confused if it's paid directly out of that pension line. But that's, that's the accounting side of it that he wants to keep. Track of exactly what happens, but we're not recommending 400,000. We have to worry about, I mean, is it likely that we, if we sweep this in, that there'll be a potential problem with the. With the year-end balance, not likely. But there's a lot of loose ends still, he's recommending 250,000.
Okay, and that, that will kind of dovetail into my second question, so. Once all the numbers are in, the end of the year comes and we surplus, I'll just throw a number out there, 500,000. I mean, that ends up adding to the 29.5 and making it 30 million at that point. Do we have the ability at that point to say, I'd like to take the 500,000 and move it into the pension then, or do we have to wait till the budget season to do that?
I'd recommend you wait or, or do it next, during next budget season, not out of the 16, 17 year, no, I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay, because I mean, this, this kind of goes back to Counselor Shortell's commentary about. Why not just let it go into, you know, the, the general fund and we could yank it out when we need to use it for something? We've never been able to get money back out of there except in, I, I can go back. Seven years, we, we allocate funds, we never use them, we allocate funds, we never use them, the last time we used them was like literally seven or eight years ago. And. That was part of the reason why when I brought up these line items that always end up to the positive too far. That I, I broached the topic of, if this particular line is going to have. To end up being healthy, overly healthy, why not just sweep it in? Because sooner or later, down the road, we're gonna have to come up with those funds anyway. If we've got them sitting there, let's use them, because if we let them roll into the general fund, getting them back out becomes complicated. Even like you've just indicated now, we would probably have to wait till budget time. Budget time will come, we'll be talking about, you know, the 10,000 lines are in the budget book. And then whatever mess is coming downhill from Hartford, because we know what rolls downhill and it stops with us and that's actually part of our problem. Part of our problem here is we've done too well for ourselves and the state feels like they can give us a harder hit, but we can take more of a punch. They're not looking at the 192 million that are in the pension fund as to how healthy we are, they're looking at that 29 and a half that's sitting in the rainy day fund. So to me, let's support it there, let's sustain it there, let's not grow it there, if we're gonna grow it anywhere, might as well grow it in a fund. That in theory, we could take all the way to 100% over 30 years, a nickel and a dime at a time. Because I mean, I don't want to make 250,000 sound like nothing, but compared to the 192 million, it is a nickel and it is a dime, but. That persistence would get it up there, so. With this item, you're telling us that the, the reason why you've moved it is, is so that there's more accounting tracking to it, so when someone says, someone says. What did we actually move, you can say, look, here's the, here's the real overage that we ended up adding to. We didn't just supply out of the line, we actually took additional funds, here's, here's where they show up.
That's correct.
So it's almost like shining a bigger light on the action.
That's correct.
All right, that, that's, that's good for me, that's kind of what I wanted to make sure that I was reading into this. And as, as again, the follow-up. You wouldn't recommend at the end of the year when we get the final numbers, that in January or February, you place an item on the budget. To move more, but we should consider that part of the budget process in April or May?
No, no, I would not.
April and May is a better time to do it?
Well, I, I think the better time to do it is, is probably this time of year, when we have a, you know, a much finer look at, you know. What our expenditures are. And what finally comes in from the state of Connecticut.
Well, what I meant, what I meant with that particular question was, when the books close on the fiscal year and we know there's. X number of dollars in surplus, if we wanted to move a portion or all of it in. In this same manner, when is a good time to make that? We know the books are closed, we know, we have booked a surplus at that point.
I, I think you would adjust the 18, I think you'd include that in the 18, 19 budget.
So you're, you're suggesting wait till budget.
Correct, yeah. It could be part of that budget process, but yeah, the 18, 19 budget process.
Okay, that, that makes sense, very good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, Counselor Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so it only makes sense if your intent is to sweep the entire surplus. If you can reasonably project your surplus is gonna be 2 million. You could sweep 500,000 at that point, you don't have to wait for the end of the year. And there's other things we could do with this money, which I'll get to in a moment, but. Mr. Bowes, the contingency, we keep on talking about money and contingency, contingency is made up of more than one account.
Correct.
And you are just proposing a transfer from one of these accounts.
That's correct.
And as we sit here 14, 17 days from the end of the fiscal year. How much, if you know, is projected to be an overage in the other portion of contingency?
I just want to correct something, the contingency is not multiple accounts.
Yeah, it is, there's two accounts.
Well.
There's three, one, nine.
But it's, I think they're interpreting that there's something different, yes, there's, there's two contingency accounts in the budget. But I think you're confusing the, the reserve with contingency.
I'm not confusing anything, he's attacking one line, there is more than one line in contingency, it's all it's been established at this point, I'll continue.
The general line is, there's, there's the general contingency, which we started the year with 320,000. I believe Mr. Shortell, when my answer to Mr. Shortell was 80,000 or 90,000 is left. That's where I meant the 90,000, I was looking at both line items combined.
Okay, so.
And that would be out of the, the general contingency line item.
Okay, and the, and the third contingency line that existed last year. But doesn't this year, is irrelevant because that was the EMS?
That's correct.
Okay, so. My understanding through Counselor Shortell's question that at the same time, there's a. Underfunding, so to speak, of the pension allotment that was approved in the current budget.
There's.
No.
No, do you mean that we haven't spent all of our funds or?
Are we projected to spend all of the funds that we had?
We budget, personnel puts that budget together, that line item, and, and it's based upon.
The question was.
The employee, every employee and what that employee contributes.
Full FTE.
That's correct.
Got it, so the question is, do we anticipate expending all of the funds that we appropriated to be spent in that line during the current budget?
Uh, no.
Okay, and what is the difference?
Approximately 200 grand.
Okay.
That was the 200 grand that I re. Responded before to Mr. Shortell as well, it's the 200 grand.
Sure.
I know the numbers are very similar and I, maybe they're blending in, but.
I'm not confused at all.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out why we don't expend what was authorized, 200,000.
We budget at 100% of payroll.
Got it, and, and we don't, we don't have full FT.
And when there's openings, correct.
But, but at the same time, it's not fully funded. So why not just spend the money that was authorized? And then you can deal with other stuff, I don't see how the representation has been made that it's clearer to track. By doing this as opposed to that, I don't get it.
The question of are we, are we, why don't we just take the rest of the money that we're not using and put it in the pension plan? Basically because we're at 100% funding without doing that, if we put more in there. I, I don't know if I have the authorization to do that.
But that's what you're proposing to do from a different account, is 250,000.
Because there's, because there's funds in that contingency, that's all.
But there's funds in the pension plan also that aren't expended.
About 200 that we think, so it was the difference.
So why not just write the check as originally authorized and deal with the 250 differently? I just don't, how is, how does it become possibly clearer? By doing the transfer as opposed to just doing what was authorized when the budget was approved last year?
Well, if, if we're gonna take a quarter of a million dollars that I'm comfortable taking out of that contingency. That's gonna exceed the amount that we have in the anticipated balance in the pension line.
By 50,000.
Yeah, so rather than moving 50, just move the entire 250, transfer the 250 out and there's a nice, a nice audit trail. That's, it's nothing more than that.
Okay, I.
In other words, I wasn't, I, I understand.
I gotta say, it doesn't make it clearer.
I understand.
I don't see how anybody could argue differently.
It, it does leave a, a, a clear audit trail of the transactions and how they follow and the authorization for me to do it. I, but I do, I do understand your point.
Okay, so what was discussed during the budget on May 4th. Was the underfunding of the pension plan. And the dispute about the money that's left over going to the reserves and that's what we discussed. Why not just pay it towards the pension? So I was, that's why I was taken aback when I, when I saw your correspondence about taking money from elsewhere, because we talked about how. Contingency isn't really contingency and the line item isn't.
It's just to use a, a little bit more, 50,000 more, that's all.
Okay, because these funds, as Counselor Shortell alluded to. Could be set aside for something like community pool, which we're gonna be talking about in the next year. They could, under the ordinance, be put in cap and non-recurring. The, the ordinance allows for that at any time during the year, there's essentially three ways that that could, that could happen. So those are other options, you would agree?
Well, I'm not gonna agree or disagree because that's not my function to determine the level of services that the town provides. And I've survived 26 and a half years by, by ducking that question, so I'm gonna duck it again and leave that to you nine, plus the guy sitting to my right.
All right, well, I'll read to you from the ordinance, it says sources of funding, and these are just some of them. Amounts authorized to be transferred thereto from the general fund, cash surplus available at the end of any fiscal year.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's one, so we could say we have 250,000, we have a general cash surplus. Here's 250 to cap and non-recurring attributed, you know, with a handshake for, for possibly community pool or some other thing. Surplus cash funds already held in reserve and available for such capital and non-recurring expenditures. That's another one, an amount from the general fund of the town not to exceed 2 mils of the grant list for the town for the year in question, those are. Three of the ways that.
I agree, yeah.
This money could just go to cap and non-recurring. So. I'm, I'm just not in agreement with what we're doing.
I understand.
With these funds at this time.
And I'm not gonna come before the mayor of the nine of you folks and say, hey, use 200,000 towards your pool, that's.
No, but I would like to know the options.
Okay, well.
We never get the.
That's a different.
We never get the options.
That's a different discussion.
I've gotta go find the options myself.
Okay. Well, that's a different discussion outside of this, I think, but.
Well, I just.
I don't disagree with you, Councilman. I don't, please don't walk away tonight. I think I'm trying to argue with you because I'm not, I do agree with you in theory, but I think it's outside this conversation. And if I, if I may interpret what the mayor said, unless I'm wrong, and I'm sure he'll correct me, is that if you put the 250,000 or whatever into the pension plan, hopefully that's gonna reduce some type of cost somewhere down the line, even if it is a little bit smaller.
Well, no matter where you, I mean arguably, no matter where you put it, unless you put it in reserves, it's going to, if spent properly, it's going to reduce some cost. Yeah, I mean, we do, you know, not to harp on the community pool, but I didn't even think about it until I got in this room, but you know, we do that with the assessment, the, you know.
Reevaluation, yeah.
The reevaluation. You know, we don't pay it in one chunk, we, little bites towards it.
To avoid a budget spike of about 600 or 800,000 the year that we have to start reval, we try to squirrel away a couple hundred thousand a year because it's every five years, you gotta do it.
Sure. You know, one of the other things we talked about on May 4th was parking lots. And I think there was an attempt to appropriate about 300,000 for that. Here we got 250. I mean, I just, I'd like to see the options. I'm, I'm not gonna vote in favor of what's before us tonight. I just, I hope that we have some sort of conversation in the future about our options and just get our heads together. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the council? Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, you were kind enough to explain some of the pension information to me last week and I appreciate it. My question is, so you had indicated that every year we pay whatever the actuarial recommendation is towards the pension fund, correct?
That's correct.
And that, when we've been doing that for a number of years?
I've been here 12 plus and I know when I started here, I went and I looked at least another five or six prior to that and every year it was funded 100%.
And we were at 100% funded at one point, correct?
Yes, back in the irrational exuberance days of the stock market, yeah. We were at about 101%. I hate to use the term overfunded. We were like 101 or 102% funded.
Yeah, I didn't say, yeah, I didn't say overfunded, just we were at the appropriate funding level. So if we paid the actuarial recommendation every year, how did we get to a point where we're in the 70s in terms of percentage of the R?
It's a great question. Two things, well, one thing is that the liability side is just growing faster than what some of the actuaries project and their assumptions. People are working longer and that's, every year they work, they're adding substantially to the overall cost of the pension plan because by not retiring, we have a step system here. People that are brought in at step one, if you will, or beginning step, are replacing people who are at mag step. So that person coming in, if he's still in that defined benefit plan, you know, we're contributing a lot less to that plan than we are the person at top step. So we are very heavy into folks who are at mag, what we call mag step. Sometimes there's four steps, sometimes there's three, depending upon the bargaining unit. So we are, I think, very heavily weighted towards the folks who are at mag step. And frankly, people, I think that there's just, and this is just unofficial and off the record, just from talking to folks in this building and the few of the firefighters and the police officers I've gotten to meet and deal with over some of the union issues, it's just, the big, big ticket is healthcare. And when you retire, even if you're 62, which is our normal retirement age, except for one contract, which is 61, and then police and fire are a little bit different, they've got like 25 and out type of deals, but it's, if you're someone who comes to work here at 25 years old as a police officer, you work your 25 years, you're 50 years old. I mean, you know, what are you gonna do for healthcare? I mean, we provide a small benefit for them afterwards, but what are you gonna do for that? And that's just for the officer that retires, it's not for the spouse or anybody else. So that's why people are hanging around.
But regardless, I mean, there are a lot of, there's a lot of uncertainty and, but the biggest reason we now have a 73% funded situation is because of 2008. 2008 knocked the stuffing out of a lot of investments and it has gradually come back, but you're not gonna make up the time you lost. So the interest being earned in the investments was way below what was happening with salaries and all of those accumulated obligations that become part of ultimately the payment in the pension. So now it's unfunded by 20, what, 26, something like that, 27, 27%? So it's, that's where the investments haven't kept up. We've been reducing what we're assuming as a return.
So to that point then, if we add an additional 250,000 this year and say every year for the next 10 years, we're really not gonna catch up in any meaningful way? Is that, would you say that's accurate?
I don't think you can say that because you're assuming that there won't be any better returns. We don't know what will happen. The more money that's in there to be invested, the more money you can make. It can't hurt you to have money in there.
So what I'm hearing you say though, is that we're really contingent on the returns, not so much the investment. And obviously we need to invest what the actuaries recommend, but beyond that, we're sort of, the fidelity of this is contingent on the returns.
If you don't invest what the actuaries recommend or calculate what they call required, required is a tricky word. When the actuaries come up with their ARC, actuarially required contribution, towns don't have to make that. That's not the requirement of their client, in this case, us. It is their requirement to use their industry standards, accepted standards, to come up with that, those amounts, if you will. So there's a little confusion here. We, only for, like I said in my prior responses and from my conversations with the mayor in the past, is at least for 30 years, put into the plan what the actuaries have calculated for us. That is, I think, the only, for a couple reasons. If you decide to take years off and let's say not put anything in there, I mean, there's less assets in that fund that can grow, number one. And number two, if you don't use your actuaries' calculation, I mean, sitting at this table, I don't know what standard do you use?
Yeah, and I don't think anyone here is suggesting to reduce it, and I'm certainly not suggesting to reduce what the actuaries are recommending. My concern is just, is it worth putting what's essentially a drop in the bucket into the pension fund or could the town put it to better use by doing, you know, one of the other many projects that the administration has outlined that need to be undertaken? That's all.
I really believe it's a reassurance to the public that we take very seriously the obligations that are truly the biggest problem for most layers of government. And you know, you can always come up with a way to spend money. The question is, do you have the self-discipline to really prepare for the future with regard to these post-retirement benefits? Because one day you may look okay and then other things happen and suddenly you don't look okay anymore. And at least we're treating it very seriously and is an opportunity here if you don't wanna put more money into it. I mean, that's, that's your judgment. But I think the public would take a lot more reassurance from us treating this subject seriously than finding some other way to spend money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, all said.
Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Marone answered a couple of the questions I was gonna ask, but for the ARC, we are given that recommendation every year. We meet that every year.
Yes. Like I said, as far as back as I've looked.
Right. And much to the discussion about the 250,000, it's very small versus the overall size of the fund. I mean, anytime anything is depressed, the stock market after the bubble bursts or whatever the case might be, or even a slow recovery, a sideways recovery, that's the best time to load up on it. I mean, when I worked for Microsoft, the whole time I worked for Microsoft, that stock went completely sideways and then within three years it doubled. And it took 10 years to happen, but that was steady, you bought in the up and the down and it bobbed between 20 and 30, but it was going sideways for 10 years and then it takes off. So it does make sense when you've got extra money to get it in there. What I wanna make sure I understand is something you said about people working longer. So I know a lot of the calculations to bring us to 72 or 73% or wherever we might be is based on the idea of people retiring at some given point and then their life expectancy being over here. And it's supposed to average out, some people live longer, some people don't live long enough, depending on how they define their benefits, if they're only taking some so that the spouse has it.
Correct.
And so on and so forth. But one of the things that you brought up, and I just wanna make sure I'm clear on it, when you have all these top steppers retiring and you have these people coming in, less salary, lower step, is it like or is it unlike social security where, you know, social security is this big bucket, but the people working are funding for the people that are going out? I don't wanna suggest that the pension is an up and down defined account for one individual person, but if we have a whole bunch of people that are at smaller salaries and then all their bigger salaries retire, does that start to put more of a burden on like the social security crunch?
No, not really, because the computation that the actuaries make, because they take part of their calculation taking our actual payrolls and reconciling that, so our actual payroll base is actually gonna be lower. So that liability is lower. And how they, how they actually square up and mesh, you know, is it skewed one way or the other? I couldn't tell you.
Right. So it sounds to me almost as if the calculation is done in such a way where they're actually computing, the numbers we're supposed to have to stay at 73% or 74 if we get there, are based on knowing all these long timers are gonna eventually exit and they're gonna be being funded at those high levels. And then the people at the bottom are being collected from and we are funding at their growth into the spots.
Correct.
All right. So that helps satisfy the rest of my questions, but I, I think, and this will probably segue into the conversation when we get there to have the pension discussion, overall, we really should look towards having the, opening the discussions with the unions and getting them away from the pension plan system by whatever means are accessible to both sides. Because much to the mayor's point, these towns and cities that go under or die under the crush of trying to make good on the promise of the pension, which we absolutely should do, and I feel that we're in a very good situation based on the fact that we're funded decently, we're not at 100%, but we're putting in what we're supposed to put in. And if we can negotiate something of that nature with the unions and then the non-union personnel to take, even if it's just new hires, get the new hires into some other plan and then we could start sunsetting this whole account. Yes, it takes 30 years to get there, but better that than 30 years down the road, have a situation where we can't make the guarantee of the promise from the pension side. I really, and that does segue into the future conversation, but I think it's good to remember this discussion for that day. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chertel?
Very quick follow-up. How many times have we done this before? Add extra money?
In my 12 years or 13 years, we have not done it. You mean, put more money into pension? We have not.
So if, okay. Why, so why now? I mean, the stock market crashed in '08, so why in '17 are we doing it now if things are so dire now? Just, I mean, what's the?
The reason is because the discussion came up in the course of the budget. And why didn't we pay all of it into pension? And we're here to suggest that can happen. I mean, that's, that's why, pure and simple.
Yeah. Yeah, and I hate to use this phrase, but that's, I don't wanna try to overthink it because that's, I made a promise to you nine gentlemen and I said, when we, you guys said like, yeah, come before us and it's as simple as that, it really is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, you know, I'm hearing tonight that the pension plan is of concern all of a sudden and I have to ask the question, in 2016, for the budget 2015 to 16, this body authorized the expenditure of 6,663,000 and change. But 400,000 of that didn't make it to the pension. That was just last year. So was it merely the discussion during, I, the reason why?
I believe that was part of it, the part of the discussion on May 4th, yes, but, you know.
When the dire situation happened 2008, if anything, when the holdings decreased, we're at 100%, but I guess the mayor and Mr. Boz, you made the decision not to put the money in the pension in the meantime?
No, we did not make that decision.
Okay.
Now just listen carefully to what occurs. Mr. Boz, the mayor's office have no authority to take money that does not represent a payment into the pension for an existing employees, to take that on our own and pay it into the pension. We do not have that authority. Whatever is the number of employees and the required pension payment is the amount that's authorized to be paid into the pension. There's money left over because people retire, vacancies occur during the year. That money doesn't get spent unless it's authorized to be spent. When the subject came up during the budget about why not have that go into the pension, it's a good idea. It certainly can't hurt our position on the pension, so that's why we're here. But it isn't because in the past, we didn't want to do it.
So in the budget year that ended 2016, there was $400,000 left in this account. It ended up in reserves. Did this body, that being the town council, make that decision?
You didn't make that decision. The budget processes, the books get closed and money that hasn't been spent ends up in reserves.
Yeah.
And there's no, there's no vehicle by which that money, so there's no vehicle by which that money couldn't have gone where this body originally intended it? Couldn't, couldn't Mr. Boz have come to us and said, listen, we have $400,000 left, you appropriated to go to the pension? Is that where you want it to go?
We, and it would require separate approval. We typically do not try to spend money right at the end of a year, guessing that the auditors will come up with a figure that we anticipate will be the figure. We're not gonna play that game.
I'm not looking to play a game, but certainly possible.
We don't wanna play that game for this purpose, putting money into the pension.
What's the game?
We're willing to change that process and say, okay, if we budgeted $6 million for the pension, even though we didn't have enough employees to really justify that, you know, we'll put the remainder into it.
But what I'm hearing tonight is we have $250,000 in contingency, even though we don't have the employees to warrant it. So council, will you approve it to go to the pension? Which is what could have happened last year.
That's true, but at this year, the council indicated an interest in paying more into the pension than what was actuarially required. I think that's great. It wasn't, it wasn't something that we were saying every year. No one was saying we should pay more than what the actuaries required. This year, the subject came up, the more money we can put into the pension with the obligations we have there, as far as I'm concerned, the town benefits from that. No ifs, ands or buts about it.
So my final question, when the pension was per se overfunded by a few percents, was the actuary at that time telling us that money should be spent elsewhere or that we shouldn't be funding the pension and that something in excess of 73% was appropriate?
No, the actuary does not tell us how we should spend money other than recommend an amount of money to be paid into the pension per the number of employees we have during the year. That is what the actuary recommends. Any actuary would tell you, however, if you wanna put more money into the pension and you have an unfunded liability, we think that's great. Why, why wouldn't they think that was great? But typically, everyone's worried about the amount we pay in. Like I say, we're at 22% of salary. That's a high number. It's a worry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any comments from the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Marone.
Very quick. If the council, uh, the money that's in the pension fund, if the town were in some sort of a dire situation, would there be means to draw that money out to spend it towards that other situation?
I believe no.
Sorry.
You mean to, you mean to sell pension assets and use them in general operations?
Right.
I'm pretty sure legally, I can't speak as an attorney, but I would, as your accountant, tell you no. Uh, and I'm pretty sure our lawyer would probably tell you no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgenstein.
Gina Morgenstein, South Main Street. So, the rounding it all together that I'm going to take from this and make a request, please, of you guys up there, is, the actuary or the advisor is saying, put this money in now. Please do. We've got it. It's a small amount of money. This money belongs to the employees. This is their money. What needs to happen at the other end of this is that when we're closing out the year, if we again have excess, this money needs a process, and I don't know whether you putting it in today can put in a request that if there is an overage based on numbers of employees and actuarial tables at the end of the year, this money should not be going into the reserve fund, but should rather be staying in the pension fund. It sounds that last year, there was multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars that went, once again, into the reserve fund. It should stay in this fund, and we're investing in the future, because this is one of our biggest expenses. The sky is falling scenario has a lot to do with pension, and so if we can put it in, let's keep it in. I don't know if an addendum to your approving of the money can say that. If at the end of the year, the numbers say we're not even, we do not want this money going into the reserve fund, please. Thank you.
Mr. Gross. Thought I saw your hand.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. First, I'd like to say thank you to the counselors who are really discussing this at some magnitude for once. This is a question that really needs to come up, and hopefully Counselor Testa will get it on the agenda this summer or early fall. Just to somebody's point here, when the pension, when the actuaries figure out how much you're supposed to pay in, they're assuming a rate of return that is a certain number, and we don't hit that number many years, and that's one of the reasons we go under, less than 100%. The numbers they're basing is on a rate of return of, used to be eight, now it might be 7.6 or something like that percent per year, and it's a tough number for the town to hit every year. So that's why we don't get to the 100% at all. To, to the chair, to the mayor, I think, or to the controller, you said there were five positions that weren't filled?
But in conversation with personnel, that's what they, they rob, I mean, that's just positions that maybe are subject to the pension on the general government side.
All right, and how many people does the pension take care of on the Board of Ed side?
I don't have the number, but it's, it's all the non-certified people who would be full times, full timers, for example, custodial folks, nurses, administrative, you know, their accounts payable, things like that, central office staff, secretaries, et cetera.
They're not, okay. The reason I say that, because you're saying there's 200,000 left over this year. How many, 10,000 per employee, that's 20 employees. Last year, if it was 400,000, that'd be 40 employees approximately.
But it's not, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
You, you understand the gist of the question.
But it's not like the position stays open all year. We might have times where, you know, I had four open positions a couple fiscal years ago in my four divisions, all at one time, and one, one of them was easy to fill because we already had a list, because it was sort of like the entry level jobs. One of them was on the high end, and they haven't given that examination for years, so personnel has to come up with the examination, so it might take two months, three months to hire a person, depending upon their, their job class, and if there's an existing list, if you will, from personnel, a certified list. But, so I, I don't equate it to jobs that are sitting there not being filled, with the exception, maybe one or two where we, we are still deciding because a job is open. I, the mayor has challenged me at least, and I'm sure he's challenged other department heads, when you have an opening, leave it open for a while if you can ascertain, do we need that, or can some of that job be filtered into other positions, et cetera, et cetera? And, and we've done this, I can only speak for, for the controllers for divisions, so there, sometimes, Bob, there is a, a lag and, and a self-imposed lag in hiring as to whether or not we're going to continue on with a position or not. So, but it's not a deliberate attempt to say, okay, well, let's overbudget by 20 people or 40 people or something. And I don't know how the school system comes up with their number, I, I can't speak to that. I do know the, the business officer communicates that directly with, with Mr. Hutt in his computation of the, of that line item that we're talking about, yeah.
How many, how often does the town pay into the pension fund?
We pay weekly.
So then you have a, a very good understanding, real early in the year, of how much you're going to be in the surplus.
That's correct.
All right. Does the council get a monthly sheet showing?
Yes.
And so you're showing, so if they go back?
Well, they get it, they get a monthly report of all line items.
Yeah. So is that a line item?
Yes.
So they'll see that that'll be very much in the black?
Yes.
They'll see that it'll be hundreds of thousands of dollars in the black by, by time April or May come, uh, before, really before the budget, even they discuss the budget, they should see that's hundreds of thousands of dollars in the black.
That's correct.
And the mayor's aware of it all?
Depending on how many pay periods are left. Sometimes in a month, you might have three pay periods for the schools, because they're, some folks are paid every other week, and we might have.
There's five weeks, some months.
We might have five on this side, so I would just be cautious at just saying, oh, there's only two more pay, because there could be more payroll periods.
I understand, but that's nickels and dimes.
Uh, no, it's not, because it's, it's, it could be in 100,000 per week, give or take-ish. Seriously.
But still, all right, so we'll go.
I'm not teasing you, I, I mean.
No, I understand. Um, I, I, no, I find the mayor, Mr. Mayor, nothing but disingenuous about this, because you've seen every year, the money that's left over, but never have decided to put that money into the pension, because as you said in eight, 2007, eight, nine, when the market was really taking a tank, we never did that, but yet, those years also, there was, there was a surplus in the pension.
May I, may I, may I take that one?
Yeah.
I have a line item in my budget, office supplies. I, frankly, I don't remember what it's in there. Let's say it's 10 grand, and we spend 9 grand, and on June 28th, I say, hey, call W B Mason, send him a check for a thousand bucks, because that's what I got left in the lineup. We don't have a bill, we didn't buy anything, let's send him a thousand bucks anyway, because that's what's authorized to spend.
I understand.
That's, it's the same, it's the same exact thing.
No, it's not.
I don't have a bill to pay, we made our arc, and I'm not authorized to do it, and frankly, just let me finish, please, and then I'll clear the floor. If I did that, my rear end is hanging out there in, Bob, please be patient with me. I am. If my rear end would be hanging out there in the wind, making hundreds of thousands of dollars of unauthorized payments after our 100% was, was, was reached, I don't have that authority, number one. And number two, if I did, I'd make sure these nine folks, 10 folks knew about it, because I ain't going down for that.
Never said.
I got, you know what I mean? That's not the way it runs.
The question I was saying is.
I don't have a bill to pay. We make our arc, the actuaries translate their computation, as the mayor said, to a percentage of payroll. Every payroll is an automatic reduction, I should say, production of the employer's side of the check, along with the employee, what we grab from the employees, and that's put into the pension assets. Same thing on the school side. I'm sorry, okay, now, I said I'd clear the floor.
What I was saying was, though, when the mayor knows the money's there, because you had a monthly statement for the most part, at that point, he can go to the council. If you were so concerned about it all these previous years.
Okay, I get that.
At that point, then you could have said, hey, the sky's falling, let's get some more money into the pension fund. This, and, and whether you guys do it or not, that, that's, they're going to do whatever they want to do. But the point is, Mr. Mayor, the point you're making this year, you should have been making every year in the past, that there was a surplus.
We're not making the point this year. We were asked to, to maybe look into this on behalf of the council.
The mayor just said?
The mayor agrees with it. I shouldn't be speaking for him, but I, he's, he's a big boy, he can speak for himself, but.
This is a very serious problem.
I'm here simply.
For many layers of government.
I'm here simply, Bob, seriously, because I promised the council last month that I'd come back here. Simple as that.
Not questioning that.
Mr. Chairman, there are a lot of things to worry about. I mean, we talk about, wring our hands over a $1.6 million surplus. 1.6 million is 1% of our budget.
No.
1%, and that, I believe, includes the reserve, the 1% reserve that is the Board of Education carryover from one year to the next. You know, that's pretty fine tuning for a $160 million budget. We just received a big payment from the state. We weren't sure we were going to get it. It's close to $2 million.
Came in.
You know, this is June, we should have had this long before then. I know of other towns who are still gasping and waiting for some money that they're, they're owed. There are bigger things that we do worry about. The pension doesn't override everything else. The pension is a serious subject. If there's interest in putting more money into it than the arc, I'm all ears and I'm willing to say, you know, whenever we can, we should. But that also has to be balanced against what is happening and what we can rely upon, and when the money will be there and when it won't.
But you have the money there, you have 200,000.
Right now, we feel that we could put $250,000 toward the pension. Whether that was true last year, different circumstance, and I think this year is, is going to stand on its own. But, we'll see. But you can't take things out of context. It's an entire very moving, very volatile issue with regard to budgets and their construct, and what you can depend upon, and what you can't. And maybe, maybe you feel everything's apple pie order. I don't, and I'm worried.
I didn't, never said it was apple pie ordered, it was, you know, you're, you're putting words that I never said. I just hope, I'm not going to go on with this, because, you know, my opinion on this, I just hope the council does something with this, they get the actuaries really here, you know, coming up here about how the funds are invested, better, lower cost funds with better returns and lower costs. You're talking 250,000 here, you spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in fees, if you can knock those fees down, that could be your extra two, $250,000 every year that you'd be putting into that pension, and that just goes year after year, we've done nothing about it, and it's just a shame, because that's something that would have saved us millions by now, because of the growth in the market that we've had. Thank you.
Mr. Morgenstein.
Good evening, Larry Morgenstein. Just, I'll be very brief tonight. First question is, is there any timeframe that this has to be decided this evening? Is there anything pending that would cause this to be a decision tonight?
Why wouldn't they do it tonight?
Well, what they do, well, well, it, first question is, does it need to be done tonight?
It should be done this month, and the sooner, their next meeting is the last week of June, 27th, and if, if it is to be done, I like the time to move the funds into the, into the plan, not the last week of June. June 30th is balance sheet date, and I want to make sure there's nothing like a, a large outstanding deposit in transit. Clean it up, so to speak.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a discussion that's worth having that you had tonight. I think the thing, though, is that if there is the time, what people have identified tonight is that there's options. It might very well be the best thing to put it into the pension, I certainly wouldn't argue that. Funding the pension makes a lot of sense, but the question has been asked, and I've heard Counselor Fishbein and other people talk about possibly community pool, parking, some other things. If there's time, the question has been raised, and there are other things that could be done. To force that issue tonight seems, again, it seems like opportunities are there. Maybe the question should have been asked in past years, but it wasn't. It was asked this year. And if there is the time to examine that, it certainly seems, I mean, 250,000, 200, whatever you're talking about, that can make a difference in a number of things, and certainly a lot of worthy things. I don't think anything mentioned tonight wasn't worthy of that consideration. But that's just thrown at them all tonight, and these ideas were just thrown out tonight, and to have that decision have to be forced tonight, certainly doesn't seem to me to be the best, best management or interest of the town, if it could be avoided. That's all I'm urging, is that if there's time to consider this further, I would hope that it could be. Thank you.
Mr. Gross.
Forgot to ask the question, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. If you don't take the money from the contingency and just sweep the money in from the pension, what happens to that contingency money?
Very much the same as any other line item, the funds are not spent.
Right, but the, and I agree.
Because, like I said, there was an additional, smaller amount in that, or an additional amount in that contingency that is there to use, which I think is going to exceed the amount that would be in the pension plan line item, that's why I suggested the transfer.
Yeah, I don't know why, I, I agree with Counselor Fishbein, Xandry. Money should be swept out of the pension, I don't see, and if you want to put more in there, then you take it from contingency, but bypass that money, take it out and put more in?
Because I can't, I can't, we've got several more payrolls on the general government side, it's, it's pretty much like shooting fish in the barrel, but the schools have a couple more dispersments that they're going to be making, that we're going to be making on their behalf before the end of the fiscal year, and those can vary quite a bit.
Wow.
And I don't, I don't know if, if hourly people are allowed to take part in the summer payroll program, and those certified people are, unless that went away too, so they're not part of the plan.
That's besides the point, thank you.
Well, no, I'm just saying, because the amount, Bob, could be a little bit higher than what's in that line item in the pension plan now, and I don't want to overspend that line item. I know I've got the 250 in that contingency line item, that's all. It's, 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 it's just simple as that, not to confuse anybody or make it mixed up. And it'll also show up in, in our transactions in each of those line items that show up in, and actually, our CBAs, when they do the annual audit, they look at every action that the council makes.
So you'll have an answer of what's in that pension mid-July, because you've made your payments based on payroll, so you're, so you'll know by July, your, July 15th, exactly what's in that pension account?
Yeah, probably later in July, as of June 30th, yes.
And, and whether you sweep it then or sweep it in June, does it make a difference?
Yeah, budgetary, we'd, I'd like to do it prior to June 30th, yes.
But there's been other years where stuff has been, well, no, it does, why would that make a difference for the pension, though?
It, as far as the balance sheet goes, it's going to increase the assets that the actuaries use in their computation of the 18, 19 fiscal years contribution.
Not necessarily, no, because it's in July.
Yes, if we make it, but if that 250, let's just say, let's say it grew to 450, or let's say it doubled, all right, it was a great year, if the whole plan doubled, it'd be an awesome year. But if, but if, but if, if that 250 is part of our assets as of June 30th, our assets are a quarter of a million dollars higher in the, in the calculation that the actuaries use, because one of the calculations is obviously is the market value of your assets at June 30th.
I know, I understand, that makes, they determine how much is there. Thank you. You got it.
Anyone else? Then I bring it back to the council. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go back to one thing, the representation that more that we can't put in the pension fund the amount that's allotted by the town council because we don't have the employees to meet full FTE. What's that based upon?
What is, I, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question, I just.
It was represented to us, I had asked the question previously, last year, the amount that was appropriated was $400,000 less.
Okay.
And I was told that that money could not be expended because we didn't have the employees And I was told that that money could not be expended because we didn't have the employees to match up to that $400,000. What's that based upon? What statute, rule, ordinance?
Well, there's, there's, there's nothing. I mean, but where's there an authorization for me to pay something that, for which a bill does not exist?
Well, the bill does exist.
I believe that's called fraud.
The bill does exist. Now, let's talk about, I don't even need to talk about fraud. Everybody agrees that the pension was fully funded approximately 2007 and that currently, well, 2007, 2008 was the representation is when our investments took a, took a dive. When was it fully funded, then?
2000, 2001, 2002.
Okay, so then.
Those areas.
Crash in 2008.
Actually, I did this.
Didn't have.
Late 90s. Let me go back and say late 90s through the early, maybe till 2000. And we had several years of not.
I don't know. I, I heard that the 2008 crash had a substantial downtrend on the pension. That's what I heard, was sitting here tonight.
It did.
So, okay, so we would agree that we're significantly lower than the level we were before.
Correct, yeah.
That we owe, in effect, to get back to where we were, we owe money. We have an outstanding bill to get back to where we were.
We don't have an outstanding bill. The bill, the amount that we need to pay.
We get into semantics about outstanding bill or not, but to get back to where we were, we owe money. So by what authority are, are you not authorized to pay to the pension fund what this body approved?
I can answer the question. It's based upon our representations of what that number means. That number means a pension payment based upon each employee at their budgeted salary, meeting all contractual obligations associated with it. That is the way we develop what that number should be.
Okay, so.
So, the year goes on, and instead of having 1,000 employees, we end up with the equivalent of 80. Some are, some positions are open for a couple of weeks or maybe a month or two months. But you end up with spaces of time where you're not making a pension payment. Having represented to you and the public that the number there represents what our payment would be based upon employment at the required levels of contribution as determined by the actuary, it would be not authorized for controller, it would be not proper for me to tell the controller to make a payment out of that line item that did not reflect our representations, that it was based upon numbers of employees. It's not, it's not presented as we're just going to make a payment to the pension this year. It's represented as this is calculated by the Personnel Department based upon the number of employees, the standards given to us, the recommendation given to us by the actuary. That's all calculated and, and that is what that figure represents. For us to just say, oh, no, we'll pay that in regardless, would be improper. That would fall away from what we said was the whole reason for it being at whatever the figure is, $6 million or whatever the figure is in a given year.
I, I would agree if those facts were all in, in conformance of what we approved, but I, I'm looking at the pension fund budget. I've been up here for eight years. Never, never has it been stated or represented that that amount is based upon X number of employees. It's not, it's not in here. This body does not approve based upon number of employees.
It was represented this year because the initial figure in that line was changed. And every year, there's a report from the controller based upon the final calculations by the Personnel Department. Those, and I think it was a $62,000 difference this year in one or the other or both, I forget which, but that those figures, we, we brought that to the council to change the recommended figure from what, what the mayor had approved to reduce it because the final calculations represented employees accurately relative to their amount of pay, et cetera. That is represented.
And that memo had a gross amount that you were looking to decrease the line. Once again, it was not X times number of employees is what you are authorizing. So I don't get the, we authorize.
You ask some of your colleagues because that is what is stated. The, the controller and the Personnel Department developed the exact figure based upon numbers of employees. So the estimate given to us, or, or the, the gross figures given to us by either insurance or, or actuary are fine tuned so we know exactly the number of positions that are being budgeted. There could be fewer positions in the year before. There might be more positions. But that, that is all tallied up and that figure represents the employment at that level.
I got it, but this body doesn't, when it authorizes the budget, say, we are only authorizing $10,000 times FTE equals X. We authorize a lump sum to be, to be spent on that line. I'm just trying to get to the representation that there is no authorization, that you can't spend that money. I, I don't see where that, there's no statute.
I'm telling you where it is. It's represented by the administration.
I totally disagree.
That the figure in the budget is in accordance and complies with each of the employees who will be employed by the town.
I totally disagree, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If there's nothing else, Madam Counselor Laffin.
I, I've been here for the six of your eight years, and I've understood that that's what this number is, and that's why I opposed the budget reductions in the last. It was a number. It's a black and white calculation. That's, that's where that opposition was, and I guess that helps me understand your understanding. Helps me understand why there was an effort to reduce that number. Because it, and we've, we've discussed it a lot tonight, and it did not come up this clearly during the budget motion meetings. But now I, I understand where, where that was coming from, saying, well, we spend less on pensions, so let's take that out. I've always understood that that number was a calculation, and I, I don't know why I did and you didn't, or if it was stated, or if it's a Board of Ed carryover thing or, or something, I don't know. But I, I, I wanted to state that the representation, representation to me did, did resonate at some point. That's it. Really?
I just, we're hearing tonight, I'm, I'm not going to do the back and forth, but you know, we just adjusted this number and we're hearing that again this year, the actuaries were off by $200,000. It's a lot of money, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Really? The actuary was not off. The, the employment didn't match what the actuary's 100% calculation was based upon. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Latrino. Moreau.
No.
Chertel.
No.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
No.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
The motion fails.
Next on the agenda is the public question and answer period. Mr. Gross.
So based on what just happened, that means the money just goes back into the budget and goes back into surplus?
Mr. Bose, is that correct?
That means the money does not get spent, correct.
Right, so, and you sweep it back.
If it's a surplus, the surplus would be increased by that amount. If it's a deficit, it'd be lessened by that amount.
Can the council come back whenever they want and say, there's 200,000 in the surplus? Can, can they come back at any time and ask for that money?
Not as I read the charter.
They can, they have to do it through the, the office of the mayor per the charter.
So the mayor has to approve it, appoint, make that motion to move it?
The council can make the, the request through the mayor's office. Then it would come back to the council on one of their agendas. That's basically what.
So if the mayor was really, if you're really concerned, Mr. Mayor, about it, then he would present that again to the council, make a better case for it, and at that point, they can approve or not approve it?
The answer is no.
Well, the mayor's sitting next to you, so.
You mean, you mean, can it be done? I, yes.
Did the mayor then at that point, be so concerned about the pension, make a motion to the council that he wants to spend 500,000, I'm just making a number, 500,000 out of reserves to the pension fund, and as long as the council approves it, gets five votes or whatever, then we could do that?
We just did, then it got denied.
I understand that. I said, make a better case for it. That's all. If he wants to do it. I'm just saying, that's how it would have to be done.
I don't know a better case, but that, that would be his call.
Right, I'm saying, it's up to the mayor. That's all. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a question for Councilman Zandry. Did Microsoft, did Microsoft stock go up after you left? No, I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding, Jason.
Any members of the public? There being none, I close the public question and answer period. We can move on to item six, which is the public hearing regarding the Neighborhood Assistance Program, which is pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 12, Section 12, 631. The state of Connecticut has provided this tax incentive program. Wallingford businesses can donate to community programs under certain circumstances. The community programs identified, and if I'm correct, Mayor, this is based upon applications submitted. Mayor, the, the community assistance beneficiaries, they're, they've submitted applications that have been approved. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. The agencies listed are Columbus House for the Wallingford Emergency Shelter Services. The amount is $120,000. The First Congregational Church of Wallingford, HVAC Green retrofit, $150,000. Gaylord Hospital, program, patient programs and services, $150,000. Habitat for Humanity of Greater New Haven for New Haven County Habitat Home Building, $150,000. The Ulbrich Boys and Girls Club Youth Development for $150,000. With that, I open the public hearing. Is there any comment from the public? Going once, going twice, going three times. There being no public comment, I close the public hearing and we move on to item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we pass a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit to the Department of Revenue Services the approved list of neighborhood assistance programs eligible for investment by business firms and provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required by the department to accept on behalf of the town any funds available for those municipal programs on the list, to execute any amendments, recisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Wallingford.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, I heard Counselor Sullivan second. First, did you pick that up? Okay. First to second, that's correct. Any discussion on the council? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I believe the motion passes. On to item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the following, that the town agrees to provide an exclusive option to Wallingford Energy Renewable, known after this as WRE, to continue negotiations for an option to lease agreement for a solar energy project on the town's landfill, that the town shall grant WRE access rights to the landfill for purposes of conducting feasibility studies, that the term of the exclusive option and access agreement shall be 60 days, that the Law Department shall approve an agreement for the exclusive option and access upon terms and conditions it deems appropriate, and that the mayor is authorized to sign the agreement.
Second. Moved and seconded. To clarify, what will happen tonight is this is our opportunity to discuss with these representatives from the applicant. The contract that we've seen on Thursday, but we are not going to act on that contract because we will hold a public hearing in two weeks.
Yes, we'll hold the public hearing at the next meeting. I've given you the agreements, and the purpose of this motion is to provide, I'm going to still refer to you as Len Lee's, because I'm used to Len Lee's, with the opportunity to continue the work that they need to do between now and the next meeting. They're kind of got things moving and need to meet certain obligations on their part. So what this does is it gives them the security of that the option is still being negotiated and gives them the access rights to go on to the property, which we've already previously have given them. And so that we can get this wrapped up at the next meeting. And basically, we've given you the option agreement with the lease. It's been, you know, pending your review, fully negotiated and ready to go for the next meeting. So we could have the gentlemen introduce themselves if you want to. Your, your, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Joe Jordan, I'm a development director.
Pull the mic closer to you, please. Is this good? Yes.
Joe Jordan, I'm a development director with Len Lee's Energy Development. My office address is in Irving, Texas.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. Chris Pitney with Len Lee's, out of the Boston, Massachusetts office. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Do you have any, I mean, we, we've seen the agreement. It was emailed to us on Thursday, I believe. And do you have any further presentation before we start grilling you?
No, no further presentation in addition to what Chris has, has been in front of you before and presented.
Thank you, then. Questions from the council. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're sort of in a weird place because ordinarily, I think we would see these things and sort of feel like I'm in a negotiation, but I did read almost all of this. And I was, I'm generally okay with the exception of one part.
Okay.
You know, all too often I find out that things are happening when I get here. What's up with this ongoing negotiations regarding a tax agreement?
What do you mean, what's up? I mean, we've negotiated these documents.
Yeah.
We are going to talk about whether or not we can enter into a tax agreement as part of the ultimate transaction. The property, the, will be, it's a tax, it's taxable, but we do view it to be in both parties' interests to look to see if we can't enter into an agreement with respect to the taxes.
Okay, so when I was going through the financial terms, I thought they were pretty good until I got to that. Because that's a negative. So how do I?
Well, I suppose you could, you know, at the time when it's been negotiated, if you, I mean, if you don't like the terms of it, you can, you vote no. I mean, it's, it's no different than, I mean, it's a tax agreement under 12 dash, I think, 65B, I mean, whatever section it falls under. So it's not like it's something that we haven't presented in other cases. It's, it's just not part of this deal at this point.
And we are just looking for approval to continue to, to negotiate, or?
For purpose, well, for purposes of tonight, because they, you know, they need the, the commitment reestablished by, by the council in order, they need to proceed over the next two weeks, so they're, they're moving. And so because we need to have the public hearing, this gives them assurances that we're still on the same track and that they can continue with their access to the property to conduct their studies over this period of time. I don't know, I mean, we're, we're going to be starting the tax agreement discussions. I would be pretty hopeful to have it done in time for the 27th. It's, you know, Shelby has been working on it, and I think he's probably at a point where we can have an internal discussion about it. He's been doing that, but this has been first and foremost.
And once again, I feel like I'm in a negotiation, but. And once again, I feel like I'm in a negotiation, but in the context of contemplating a possible tax agreement, which would mean less, not gonna pay more, we're fully aware of what's going on in the legislature as far as reducing the amount of acreage that's available to be used for solar. I think you should take that into consideration, so.
I, I'm not following you.
Or we're reducing the amount of land that one can use for these purposes?
This is, this is a deep project.
Understood.
So, I mean, are you saying that they're, they're changing the terms of the project that they've already awarded?
No, I'm saying that if we're going to contemplate giving somebody a, a reduction in taxes, I think we should be contemplating their ability to perhaps, it's a supply and demand sort of thing, is the way I'm looking at it. Not gonna be a lot of these, as many out there.
Okay.
So I just, that's all I'm saying, and I'm just, that's the only part that jumped out at me. So, I mean, we can have a discussion offline.
Sure.
But that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Um. Will we see, let me see if I understand this. This seems to me like you're, you're, we're granting you the option to determine whether you want to complete the project that you have in mind. Does that sound right? In other words, is there going to be another lease agreement that comes to us if you decide to go forward?
No.
Or is this the one?
This, this op, the option in the lease agreement that I gave you-
Right.
-for purposes of tonight will be the final agreement.
Okay.
And so what happens is over a three-year period of time, they're gonna do their due diligence.
Correct.
They've got a lot of permitting to do, they've got to assess the properties involved to make a decision, make sure it's all feasible. Once that is completed, if it's a go, then the agreements that we're, that we would be agreeing to, automatically the lease becomes effective.
Underst- okay.
They exercise their option to enter into the lease, we're then, we're obligated to enter into the lease-
Okay.
-at that point. So, so we're not coming back with future documents except for at the next meeting.
Then that, the thank you, then that leads me to my question. Um, I had, um, some questions posed to me by a resident, Mr. Conroy, um, and asked that, I asked them, and they were very reasonable to me, so, um, one of the concerns expressed was, um... Let's say you go up, you go belly up, you go out of business, and there is a bunch of equipment left on the site. Um, and I'm looking, looking at the, looking at the lease agreement.
Mm-hmm.
There is mention of the fact that within X number of days, you know, you have to pay to remove it, but if you went out of business and went bankrupt, you wouldn't be able to.
They have a-
Is there a bond of some sort to cover that eventuality?
There'll be a security posted in the 10th year of the lease. Um, you know, prior to that, because there is financing involved, there's the security that a bank would take possession of it while it's, so we had the same concern, that was a major, that section was a major contention, um, and we're satisfied with the, with the provision as it is at this point. So in the 10th anniversary, there'll be a posted security for removal and restoration.
Okay. That answers that. Um, also, I'm not sure if this, I wasn't really sure about the question, uh, but he wanted to know, um, who was paying for connection to the electrical grid, and if that, if we had any, um, involvement in that, either our utility or Wallingford.
That is under, they're looking at that process now. They're dealing directly with the electric division, and any cost involved in the interconnection is their responsibility, including reimbursing us for our-
They're, they're being the company.
The company's responsibility. They're, and they will be reimbursing us for our expenses, for example, including on these documents. I had outside counsel assist with that, and we're being reimbursed by the company for those expenses also.
Okay. Uh... Well, and also, just an expressed requ- expressed interest and hope that you would utilize to the best of your ability, uh, local contractors, certainly licensed electricians, that may seem not necessarily to say, but apparently it is. Um, any kind of local contractors that you could use for the construction and maintenance of this, and certainly making sure that, you know, licensed electricians are handling all that type of work. So I wouldn't have any, any follow-ups. I'm expressing that on behalf of somebody who obviously did a lot of research on this. And one more question, and simply because it has come up over and over again in community discussions of this, there was mention of a desire, you know, why, why is Wallingford not partnering in any way with you, uh, on the development of this facility? And I've attempted to answer on your behalf in the past, which I probably not qualified to do. Can you answer that? Is it a matter of you're not interested? It was, it didn't come up? We're not interested? Can you answer that?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Testa.
Please, thank you.
I, I, I feel just, given the hours I spent with Janice over the last three or four weeks, that we are very much a partner, uh, with, with Wallingford, and, and so I, I view the township right now as a key partner, both, um, with the, the lease agreement for the landfill, uh, working with the electric division on the electric interconnection, and then also, uh, it was mentioned, the tax agreement, uh, putting together a tax agreement that, um, evens out the tax payment every year as a key part of attracting investment for the project. These projects involve, uh, attracting a lot of capital. So, um, giving investors, uh, confidence in what those tax payments are, are going to be is a key part of, of their investment decision. So, um, but I, I do feel like there is a partnership. Um, in terms of, of an equity partnership, uh, we're not looking for outside equity, uh, at this point, but if we, if we are in that position, I'd be happy to, to talk to Janice about, uh, potential equity investment. Uh, we did discuss it earlier, and, and I, I think the amount of legal brain damage associated with an equity partnership would be, uh, would, might be insurmountable, but, um, it's definitely something we could look into.
Any other questions from the council? Questions from the public? Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Uh, certain counselors have mentioned there's a document. Is that a public document?
Yes.
All right. So, um, how would I get it? Or how would the public get it?
Yeah.
You can ask the clerk for a copy?
The clerk or my office.
Ask you for a copy. Huh? Email. You said they, they said they emailed them, so I'll take an email. Thank you. Yes, please. Thank you. Can, since it's a public document, then what, how big of a solar array is this? Are you on just the town's property, or are you going on state property also?
The document does not specify the size of the solar, uh, um, the exact, uh, size of the solar facility that'll go on the town's land. So the due diligence that Janice spoke of will allow us to identify, um, the size of the facility.
Are you in discussions with the state on their land also?
The state, no. We are in discussion with other landowners, but not the state themselves.
So you're, it's, so it'll be bigger than just the, it could possibly be bigger than just the landfill down there?
That is correct.
Do you know about how big you're looking, how many acres you're looking to?
I would hesitate to, to say on the acreage, because the acreage may be of less use. Uh, I will say on the megawatts, which is a public number, uh, that we have been contracted with the state, that it is, uh, we are targeting between 15 and 20 megawatts.
And about how, and, and people, you have that number, and the way that they break down those numbers when you see them in the paper and so forth, that would generate enough power for potentially how many homes?
Oh.
That's the number that normally people see, that understand?
Yeah, it, it can, those can be a little misleading based off power and energy. Um, maybe I could get back to you rather than give you a-
Yeah, I just wondered tonight.
-off-the-cuff number that would be wrong.
And what is the number that, since the counselor has it, counselors have it and so forth, what is the number that the town would receive from Len Lease per year? Or is it, is it graduate? Is it-
You talking about rent payment?
Yes.
And under the lease document, um, it will be, uh, $1,500 per acre per year with a minimum, regardless of acreage, of 20,000 with a two and a half percent escalator each year.
And, um, is the property, is the solar array and all the equipment even taxable?
Yes, it is.
All of it? But it depreciates per year?
Well, usually when, with personal property, there's a depreciation schedule, so, yeah.
Right. So, do you have an idea? So that's the number that Attorney Fishbein was discussing when he was talking about taxes? Is that the number that you don't have a number on at this particular point?
We're working on.
So it's a moving number. Do you have an idea of what that would be? No?
I didn't, wouldn't want to go there. It's not my expertise.
And Len Lease isn't gonna say, because they're not gonna tell how much money they're gonna put into the project, correct? Or you will? Or you will say how much? How much the solar panels are gonna be that you're putting in approximately?
We've given a range in the past. Um, I, I don't know if that's, yeah. We, we, I mean, so because we don't know the exact size of the facility, because there's quite a few unknowns, I think we're more comfortable giving a range. We've said in the past somewhere around-
You can talk into the mic, you don't have to face me.
It's, it's okay. In, in the interest of just answering your question, um, somewhere about, uh, 25 to 50 million dollars, that's a fairly large range, but, but we have, um, you know, I think for, for present purposes, that should be okay.
And that's for the whole project, or just what's gonna go on town property?
Thank you. That is for the whole project, not what's on the town property.
And, and then just, and I don't mean to be, but is there gonna be more of this not on the town property or on the town property? Where is your biggest concentration of the solar panels gonna be?
I would, I would respectfully reserve, uh, answering that question.
Will the council know that before they, you'll know-
It would still be tax, if it's in Wallingford, it's taxable.
I understand, I understand. Doesn't make it, oh, I under- no, no, I under- I understand. It doesn't make a difference if, if I have a, yeah, I have a car that's on this property or a car on that property, you're still taxing me for the car, whatever address it is. I understand that.
But, but directly, uh, that's, that's a big part of having the option agreement, is, is, is having that option in place so that we have the comfort to get the equity from our management to put at risk and do all the studies and the surveys required to figure out what acreage we can use and how many megawatts we can get on the property.
Right, because you need to know, and that, and because there are certain areas of the dump that are hazardous that you can't use and so forth.
Yeah, this isn't, it's not a green, it's not a typical project. It's, it's technical, it's, it's a little bit more complicated than, let's say, the average bare solar project. So we've got a lot of work to do to figure out how we can be creative to, to make the most of the land, but also, uh, remain in compliance with a lot of the state requirements for, for monitoring and, and upkeep of the site. So it's, it's not the typical, you know, I think one of, one of my last projects, I was in the Texas Panhandle, and it, it looks like, you know, a lunar landscape. It's the moon, and so you can do almost anything you want. Um, this is, this is different, and this is gonna require a lot of money and a lot of time. A lot of very smart minds are gonna have to be put to work to figure out how we can maximize the site.
Right, because maybe the mayor will know, because there's only, there's still so many more years that the state has to monitor the dump. Do you know how many more years they have to monitor it?
No, but they're aware of the project, and we've had meetings with them and everything.
Oh, I know, but, but I just didn't know if there was just two more years on their thing, or 20 more years that they're monitoring it. That would make a difference for them, and I was just curious to know that, because that makes a difference on how they build their plant. I just, uh, I just wish the town was partner in this, because this is, could be very lucrative, and that's why they're involved in it. I mean, you're not here to lose money, and there's, I assume there's state programs, that's why you're involved in this program right now, and it would just, it's a shame the town's not getting involved. Yes, we're gonna get some tax dollars. We'd get the tax dollars no matter what, it's built there. We're getting a pittance for the land. It would be nice to be an equity partner of some degree in this, and hopefully maybe somebody would discuss it with them. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no hands, I bring it back to the council. Uh, we'll have a roll call, and to be clear, this is on the motion for the extension of the option.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughen?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll be talking, I guess. On to item 10.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut general statutes section 1 dash 225F and section 1 dash 2006B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the following pending litigation: 69 North Plains Wallingford LLC, First Board of Assessment Appeals; J. Gavin Properties LLC, First Board of Assessment Appeals; Two Fairfield Boulevard Properties LLC, First Board of Assessment Appeals; and Carriotti Properties LLC versus the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. The public should clear the council chambers. Call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the council is back in public session. On to item 11.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize a settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of 69 North Plains Wallingford LLC versus the Board of Assessment Appeals as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. On to item 12.
I move we authorize a settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of J. Gavin Properties LLC, First Board of Assessment Appeals as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. On to-
I move we authorize a settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of Two Fairfield Boulevard Properties LLC versus the Board of Assessment Appeals as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. There being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On to item 14.
I move we authorize a settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of Carriotti Properties LLC, First Board of Assessment Appeals as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recuse myself from this matter.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, just for the sake of clarity, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein is recused. Laughen?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
There being no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I declare the meeting adjourned.